...meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, January 13th, 2015, if everybody will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads? Okay, the agenda will stand as presented. For the record, we do have a 6:15 public hearing regarding a new lighting district, so wherever we're at in our agenda, we'll have to immediately halt to go to that public hearing. As far as the first matter of business we have up for the new year is election of officers for the board, the first being for the role of president, and I will nominate Lou Geovasis as president for 2015. Second discussion. Any other combinations? All right, what's that? Trust me, it's cross related.
Don't think that that hasn't been discussed.
We can get a quick one-two pounce here. Roll call. Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Next up, we have election of vice president.
I'll make the motion that hereby hereby, hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, start counting out, nominating elect Scott Hawes as vice president of the Plain Township Board of Trustees.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead. Turn the agenda over to President Javasis.
Next order of business, hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, start counting out to abide by the preliminary law and conduct meetings according to the rules of the board.
I will so move.
Discussion.
Let's give a second.
Second.
It's gonna take a minute.
Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Second minutes. I'll also move the board trustees. Says adopt the board trustees meetings.
I will so move on beginning of year resolutions, number four.
Second. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
I'll also move the Plain Township Board of Trustees, retain all the voice. So moved. Second discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes. I'll move on beginning of year resolution, number six, work rules and policies.
Second. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
I'll move adoption of the Plain Township Board of Trustees, adopt following home holidays as listed. Second. Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
I'll also move the Plain Township, following mutual aid agreement. Second that. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Also move the Plain Township Board of Trustees. Adopt hereby authorize the fire department to provide assistance to other groups, so that's the one we're on. Joint Fire Investigation Unit.
Number nine.
Yeah, number nine.
So moved.
Second discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis? Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
I'll move on beginning of year resolution, number 10, for workers' compensation.
I'll second it. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
I will move on beginning of year resolution, number 11, insurance benefits.
I'll second that. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
I'll move. I'll move on beginning of year resolution, number 12, for start council of governments, hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, to appoint Lou Geovasis as representative of SCOG, and that point Scott Hawes as the alternative representative for 2015.
Second. Any discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Move adoption of resolution number 14, Stark County's response.
So moved, or second.
Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Also move resolution number 15, adopt zoning assistance overtime. Second. Discussion. Hearing done, roll call.
Yeah, you skipped. Got me out of there.
No, we did start.
Yeah, you missed the advanced taxes, which are important.
I'm here.
Number 13.
Number 15. Come back with.
I just gotta change something.
You second 15?
Who was the moving party on that?
Lou moved, I seconded.
So the roll call, and that's Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Move on. Plain Township Board of Trustees, adopt a request for advanced taxes. Second that. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
I will move on beginning of year resolution, number 16, waves of increase for governmental agencies and political subdivisions. Second that. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
And I will move adoption of resolution number 18, adopt some delegate assistance. I'm sorry, paying cost for refreshments, I'm sorry.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
I'll move on beginning of year resolutions, number 18, GUP deals, unwanted assets.
Second. Any discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes? And Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Okay, that will conclude the beginning of the year resolutions.
Mr. Javasis, if you work for the Boy Scouts and the crowd and the students, explain what the board just went through with those 18 resolutions, what that means.
The resolutions that we just adopted are done annually every year. They're basically pretty much housekeeping rules. It allows the board trustees to do certain things during the year, allows us to set the dates that people are going to be off on vacation, what our work rules and work rules and policy for all township employees are going to be. Reaffirms our mutual aid agreements with surrounding subdivisions that we have agreements with, and I mean by mutual aid, that would be for police and fire services. So if we need assistance from another community or another community needs our assistance, this allows us to do that. We also approve the everything from workers' compensation, that's the rules that stay governed by where an employee is injured, how they're compensated, and their medical claims are handled, amongst some other things. Stark County's response, the zoning office assistance, for instance, that's for our zoning secretary that comes to our zoning board of appeals meetings and our zoning or commissions meetings. So they're pretty much the resolutions that we task at the beginning of every year that sets up the rules and the way that township is really going to be operated for the coming year.
Thank you.
Okay. That will take us to the sheriff's report, there's nothing on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience at this time have anything specifically for the sheriff's department solely? We do have a public speaks portion at the end of the agenda, but this is solely for issues related with the township sheriff's department. The board have anything? Okay, that'll close the sheriff's report. We'll go to the detective report.
Thank you. For December 2014, we had 759 calls for service, slightly down from last December. Eighty-two crash reports, crash injury reports were only seven for December, so that's pretty good. A hundred and two alarms, 176 traffic stops, 98 citations, and 42 arrests. I handled 16 follow-up investigations and closed 11 cases.
Nice job, busy.
Strong closure rate.
And that's all I have?
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to unfinished business, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution to amend resolution 14-443 for our township renovations from various vendors, and to authorize payment, and also to authorize payment to deranger construction for work completed in the township hall thus far.
I will so move on unfinished business, number one.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
And that closes unfinished business.
Thank you. We'll go to new business.
New business, item number one is a notice for the Stark County Township Association meeting, which is this Thursday at 6:30 at Perry Township Fire Station number three. You can still, even though it says reservations due by Monday, January 12, email reservations if you're interested in attending. Item number two is a resolution to approve the purchase and authorize payment to L3 Mobile Vision for four in-car cameras at the state of Ohio contract price in an amount not to exceed $19,750.07 from Fund 01G-02. This also includes four free body vision camera systems at a savings of $499 per system.
I will so move on new business, number two.
Second. Discussion.
Just as a point of clarification, the additional cameras are what Lieutenant Springer had reached out to me, I believe it was December 30 or 31, and I just left you guys preemptive messages because of this time sensitive with the L3 offer. Actually, those additional cameras are going to be placed on the cruisers and they're going to be used as part of the sheriff's monitors pilot of some additional surveillance. I indicated my messages, you know, this is for the safety and wellbeing of our deputies, but, you know, approved transfer, and, you know, helps, I address why I go, like, you know, try to make, so, and the fact that it's at no additional cost.
Is a huge benefit.
Any further questions? Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Do you want me to start item number three?
Uh, yeah, quickly.
We won't get through it, it is the, we probably should wait. I do have a lot of information on that. We can do, item number four is a resolution for the false alarms.
I will so move on number four.
Second. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
I can also slip in number five, which is a resolution to purchase office furnishings and equipment from various vendors for our new substation here at the township hall.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to pause, we are going to go to our 6:00 PM, or 6:15 PM public hearing for the new lighting district on Enduro Avenue, and I'm going to turn that over to our fiscal officer, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today's just the hearing day, I don't know if you want to put it out to people that are in favor, people that are against the lighting district. This is a request for an area that currently has some lights on it, and I think the different homeowners in that area are giving up the bills, I believe, on their own. This was created district, it's no new lights.
Oh, it's the same lights?
Yeah, same lights, and I don't think there's any new lights being put in.
So they're just changing the district itself?
Creating a district, yeah.
Right amongst all?
Yeah, taking the lights out of private individuals' names and adding a district and just assessing the value.
Okay, does anybody in the audience at this time have anything to say in favor of the lighting district or against? Not that'll close the lighting district here, it's for Enduro Avenue.
There should be a resolution.
I'm trying to get to it.
I don't have it in my stack.
Should there be a resolution? There should be one. Yes, sir. Just give your name and address for the record.
My name is Joe Ward, I live in 5 Enduro Avenue, and my neighbors are here also. We have currently one light on that street, and that's the only light we have on the whole street. So the neighbors, we got together and we decided to light one on the street because, you know, today is time to, we need lights. That's one of our safeties for ourselves and for our children, and currently we have one light on the street. So we have decided to divide the light amongst our whole neighborhood, so we had a petition that we turned in, so we created appreciated, and families had opportunity for our safety. Thank you.
So you've got additional lights going off there?
Yes.
There's no resolution.
Yeah, I don't have any.
That's all right, I'm going to move adoption, we'll sign the resolution, and we'll sign it, so move the adoption of the lighting district for Enduro Avenue. Second. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Okay, that will take us, we will go back to vacation, that row, please come on.
Item number three is, I received a letter from the Board of Stark County Commissioners. They had received a request for the vacation of Enduro, and the date of the public hearing is set for 1:00 PM on February 18th in the Board of Commissioners' wardroom at 110 Central Plaza South. They've asked for any written comments to go to Rick Florrie prior to January 30th, 2015. I have a description, the petitioners' names and addresses, the plat. I have sat down and talked with our highway superintendent, our fire chief, and Denny Falk also, and they have given me written letters from their department, see no issues with the road vacation, no reason why the Board of Commissioners should not grant it. To go on record, though, I would like to start with the chief, so the board can hear from each of the departments, that this would involve each department's opinions and thoughts. I'll start with the chief.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Campbell. As I looked at that, and the plotting of where that property's at, and the hydrant locations, and the right ways as far as accessibility into that area, I felt no reason to object against the vacancy of Enduro in the north end there. Those hydrants sit right there at 33rd and Enduro, which we have access to, and those two residents sit on Enduro, east side of, east and west side of 33rd Street here, we have access to water supply, that's pretty much our biggest concern, making sure that we have access to water for anything that can take place or so. Coming up 34th Street, I'm sure the residents know, it's not maintained very well to begin with, and we don't use 34th Street to come up in that area, that's the only thing we should come up, you know, Moore's or one of those other streets to come up in that direction, so I see no reason for anything to be at home. Thank you.
As far as, yes, after looking at the area, the only drainage we have is in the right way of 33rd Street, so there is no drainage in that 186 feet block of Enduro. Like the chief said, we don't use 34th Street because we do not maintain it, it's maintained by another entity. There are two driveways of those current residents that sit on the corner which don't have access to this vacated area that will basically be an extended driveway to both of them. As long as the residents understand, we will not do maintenance of that area if it is free.
Right, and neither of the parcel that are primarily affected have any outstanding zoning violations, they have a very solid history, and they appear to be good neighbors, and this would not have any adverse effect on zoning the area whatsoever, so I see no objection, which is my say.
So with the board's permission, I will send those three letters from each of the department heads with a cover letter to the Board of Commissioners, to be returned for it.
Should we send, because this street came in as a group of huge concern, should we send a representative to that day of that hearing, and just to show that somebody being there shows support from us?
I absolutely will attend, I know.
When's the hearing?
It's February 18th. I have to say, at our staff meeting, when we looked at this, all of us were so very impressed, and I know that the Board of Trustees has been also with all of you citizens from Enduro, because you came in with a problem. We offered you several solutions, we did what we could on our end, but we gave you things that you guys could do, like the lighting district and the road vacation, and it's one of the first times that we have had a group of folks really come together and take all of those positive steps and follow through. So it's really, really impressive and speaks a lot about you folks, and we all were very happy to see that come through, and are just think the world of it all, so. Absolutely.
There would be a portion of you that's. Yeah, don't ask her. That's great.
Thanks again. I'd like to applaud the township and the Board of Trustees for all the help it's given us. We have actually tried to maintain our area, as you know. We've actually tried to take some of the back, or all of the back, because we've experienced cars coming down the street late at night, fouling the lights with TV sets and police chasing them, you know, people Walmart coddling and screaming. One of our neighbors, I woke up one morning and found a bag of money in her yard, or somebody robbed, and just threw the bag in the yard after the police chased them. So, you know, I can't tell you how much the neighbors appreciate you guys, how much we appreciate all your efforts and your help, and we're going to do as you see, everything we can to maintain our neighborhood, but I'd just like to say we're grateful, I can't tell you how grateful we are to you, because these are two steps, you know, toward actually maintaining our neighborhood, and we love our neighborhood, and we want to stay. Thank you.
And that ends new business.
We have the fiscal officer report, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number one, on the agenda for the fiscal office is a request for a resolution by the board to approve the payment of the pending warrants in an amount of $3,300, $83.76 is attached.
So move for you to pay. Second. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number two is a request for a resolution to authorize the payment of the regular payroll and not to exceed $220,000.
I'll also move for you to pay. Second. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number three is a request for a resolution to authorize the payment of the following medical complaints provided by health care.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number four is the financial report.
Anybody have any questions? Hearing done, number six, or number five?
Fiscal officer number five, it's a request for a resolution by the board to approve the following transfers.
I will so move fiscal officer number five.
Second. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number six is a request for a resolution by the Board of Trustees to approve the sick pay bonuses as negotiated in a contract with the Plain Township Firefighters' Association as well.
I will so move fiscal officer number six. Second. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number seven, it's a request for a resolution to enter into the contract again, fitting the babies, to complete an actual rollover reports as required per DORC, possibly for the year 2014, we just finished that.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number eight is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the fiscal officer to transfer funds as stated between meetings for expenses that occurred, and include those transfers in a resolution at that following.
I will so move. Second. Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
And Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
That'll conclude the fiscal officer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Flex, with the administrative report, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution for the employee assistance program in an amount not to exceed $2,500 from Fund 01A, 26E.
Absolutely.
Second. Any discussion?
Just for clarification, how many years have we had this in place now, is this on the third, or is this just the second?
This will be the third year.
As far as to the reporting, I'm not asking on who, but how many, right?
Yeah, they do, they do. And by law, we do have to have an employee assistance program in place for the fire department. There's a fire department in some part of Ohio, I can't remember off the top of my head, that's being sued for not having an employee assistance program in place, but they do, and we do have people going and visits that exceed the value of that.
Any further questions? Hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Item number, I swear I paid attention. Item number two is just a notification that I applied for and received a scholarship through the local government innovation fund to attend Lean Ohio training for the public center, valued at $2,000, and the next week I will be attending training at Kent State Stark, the 20th through the 22nd, and then the following week, the 28th and 29th, and looking forward to bringing that information back to the township, and then also putting that forward to applying to some grants for the township through Lean Ohio. And that's the end of the administrative report.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell, and the fire department. Just thank you, Mr. Chair, item number one is Javasis reporting. Mr. Chair, item number one is the deputy head of the report for December.
Last week, just to break down each month for the whole year of last year. December was probably one of our busiest months we've had in the history of four hundred sixty calls. There was a scanner about three or five day period around twenty-two, twenty-four calls a day, so we're pretty busy.
Sit here. Just do the weather.
Weather wasn't too bad, so I can just...
Full moon, extended full moon or something.
I'm sure they may have had part of it, but...
Chief, the last week, Jacksonville, I assume that's under the automatic gating green of most of those?
Yeah, we're actually gonna be saying now, a few, a lot of those calls are at the urgency, and I've had discussions with them, but we're gonna be eliminating some of those calls that are on there based on their response and those dates that, so that number should actually come out over the next few months and start to work on that.
Yeah, because the station's just right around it.
If they're out, if they're out on another call, then we're a little bit closer, so you and I are gonna be saying now, working on that and reevaluating that. Item number two is a resolution to authorize reimbursement payments to Ash for about four hundred dollars for his health membership. Just on the budget.
Also move. Second discussion.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to grant a request for tuition reimbursement to Bemidji, and he had the attached authorization payment not to exceed three hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents.
Fire five to three. Second. Moving on that. I move on. Second, that discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number four is to authorize a purchase for gasoline and diesel fuel not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
So move on. Fire number four. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number four is to authorize a purchase for gasoline and diesel fuel not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
So move on. Fire number four. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution to appoint Scott Hawes as chairman as a board member and a board member for the Plain Township and the volunteer firefighters who pay the funding. We still have to maintain it because Chief Craft's position, contact the state, we can make the state, so just a formality. I'm not prepared for much.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. We'll go to the order department next time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly road report for December. Any questions? We'll be glad to answer.
Nice work by the team during the...
Thank you. We worked hard and long through those days.
Yeah, we had four o'clock in the morning, roads were clear, and so...
We had a lot of good phone calls this time. We're busy the last ten days, and we are likely in December.
How's our salt usage to this point?
We are, I checked it today, compared to last year, we're like thirteen hundred tons under compared to last year, so we're doing good. It's showing more and more signs.
The tracks are working.
We have one down, but it's a backup, so we're okay. Item number two is a resolution to authorize a purchase of gasoline, oil, diesel fuel not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
So moved. Second discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Item number one is our monthly report for December of twenty fourteen.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, we'll go to the zoning department as well.
Gentlemen, item number one is our monthly report for December of twenty fourteen. Any questions? We'll go ahead and answer.
Nice job, Joe.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, we'll go to the zoning department as well.
Gentlemen, item number one is our monthly report for December of twenty fourteen. Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
And the question is done.
Thank you, that's it for me tonight, thank you very much.
We'll go to the park department.
We are submitting our year-end report as our only agenda item this evening. It goes on, job blocked out, it's been a year of streamlining and programming, identifying the ones that were effective, the ones that weren't effective, it's all the ones that were working. We've got some new programs this year, but last year they'll feel it helped grow upon that ten percent growth we had this year just in the revenue aspect, so.
We expect another really good year and put some things into place to make the act more excited about it. The guys and the folks with the program have done a great job, and the integrators are looking immaculate, they've been great with it as well.
The post's report says there at the top, he showed a twenty-two thousand dollar increase in receipts from two thousand fourteen, from two thousand thirteen, and that's a substantial increase, and that's because of the hard work you've done.
Thank you.
Closer to fifteen percent.
Yeah. You know, most people might not be aware, but the township park system is not funded by a levy like most communities or townships. They have separate park levies for property tax to maintain their parks, and our parks are maintained solely by user fees primarily coming out of the diamond facility, and you know, our twenty thousand dollar increase is huge for us in the operations and the maintenance of those things, so that way we don't have to go to the taxpayers for a maintenance bond for those parks to maintain them, so great job, Rob.
Thanks, and I want to thank all the other departments for all their help along the way. It's been a great learning experience, and really helpful.
Law director, nothing. Start to your side.
Which one can do it? I think it is. Always a good sign for the law department. Go to communications, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. Just one communication that Susan White from Broward View and Steiner called in to thank the road department for doing an excellent job, so. So, if you could pass that along to your crew, if you have time to talk.
Okay. That comes from the time proportion for public speaks on our agenda. If anybody has any issues related to the township business or would like to address the board, you can do so at this time. We only ask that you give your name, address, fully through the fiscal officer, when he gives you the note that he has that, you can go ahead and speak, it's not necessarily for, you know, necessary for you to come up to the mic if you don't want to. There are microphones above your heads there, so, and we do have a three-minute time limit that we limit for public speaks more. We will extend it based on circumstances, but does anybody have anything they would like to address the board?
Hi, I'm glad to see everybody appears to be doing well this year. Bob Brenneman, four one three three, Plain Center, Northeast. Yeah, I have a few questions. The first one I should know, but the others, who was the zoning officer in two thousand and four in the township? I should know this, but I don't remember.
Stephen Peroz.
Yes, Stephen Peroz.
Stephen Peroz.
Yes.
P-E-R-O-Z.
Okay. When was he hired and when did he leave, you know?
Steve left, um...
He'd have to look.
I'd have to look at, but I'm saying two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
I think you're in Walmart.
We can get exact dates, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, when was, he left then, yeah.
It was November of two thousand and...
You know when he was hired?
Two thousand and nine, yeah.
You remember when he was hired?
Steve was hired, it would have been in the spring of two thousand and two.
Okay. Also, I want to ask about the road department with the...
That's not right.
That's not right?
Just, just, we don't give you bad information because it wasn't that early. Michelle was here then.
That's right, by the way.
Yeah, so, let me get you, let me get you exact dates.
I thought it was the spring.
Yeah, I think you're right on the spring, but I think it was later, I think it might have been four or four.
Okay.
But...
It was the spring.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay, that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, I can question you here. All right, the road department, I noticed that the yearly fifteen thousand dollar limit on the purchase of fuel, now a barrel, is that for the year? Is that what the township allows?
No.
My point is, you know, everybody knows gas is going down, which is great.
Right.
It's down to forty-six dollars a barrel. Unfortunately, diesel's not really tearing down, but, I mean, I don't want to, is the township gonna get stuck in a long-term deal here?
No, 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 that's just like what we call a blanket purchase order, so I don't have to come to the board every time I need fuel.
Okay.
This time of the year, that probably lasts two months. We have a two thousand gallon diesel tank and a thousand gallon gas tank, so with all the trucks being out as often as they are this time of the year, it's not a real... We go through a lot of, yes, the price of that come down drastically.
Yeah, I should have waited to get gas and dry it. Yeah, it's down ten cents a gallon.
A lot of times those requests not too far ago were, you know, he was asked for twenty, so it's about five thousand dollars less they've been averaging per request now, so that accommodates for a reduction in fuel costs.
Now, with the salt concern, I know salt has gone up substantially from last year to this year.
Our cost, our cost has essentially stayed flat.
Yeah.
Flat there on a per ton basis. We go in with the county consortium to purchase, and the other options is the statewide consortium. The challenge is this board opted in the past to not go with the statewide consortium because of the lack of clarity on how much guarantee we were in getting the material, and actually proved to be a wise decision. The public, you may have seen in the paper, depending on how the media frames it or whatever, that we were spending, let's say fifty to fifty-five bucks a ton through the county. However, that state consortium was offering it for twenty-six dollars a ton.
Yeah, so...
You're going, okay, twenty-nine dollars a difference, why are you not going there? You ask anybody who went into that around here, how that worked was the state got all their salt, and then once they had what they needed, they pushed it down the county, and once the county had what they needed, they pushed it down to the townships, the villages, the cities. In a lot of situations, folks didn't have, folks didn't have salt. Leap forward, yeah, leap forward to this year, and that state, that state price is actually four times what it was prior to, because it was close to a hundred bucks, a hundred bucks a ton.
I've talked to several communities, and they're paying a hundred, over a hundred and twenty for salt per ton, where we're paying fifty dollars and so cents, I think, this year. We're staying at the same price. We have paid some money this year because of mild weather and stuff.
Well, but then, I mean, we've all, Joe and his department and his team collectively has done some things to look at cost savings initiative. Has it been, this is the third year now with salt control, salt control?
This is actually the fourth year with salt controls that we can set per mile, how much salt we're using, and this will be the second year that we're adding liquid de-icer to our salt, which helps prolong the melting process in colder temperatures. Now we can melt something down below zero where we couldn't before. The salt usually quits working at twenty degrees above zero, so it's showing great signs because we're using less salt because of the additive, plus our controls are controlling how much we use now.
Well, I know my section of Plain Center's always been great, you know, that's where I get my running start to get up my driveway, so I appreciate that, so, thanks, Thomas.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they would like to bring to the board's attention?
Tom Peaper, twenty-eight, ten River Run Circle. I'm here on behalf of the Plain Township Historical Society. Ten years ago, sixteen people gathered in this room and said the Plain Township needed a historical organization to preserve and promote what this township has been and where it will be going, and that organization is still going today, and we're very proud of that, and we're especially proud that we have the support of you folks sitting there, particularly the administrator and the trustees who have been on our side over and over again, and we appreciate that tremendously. In part, we will be celebrating our tenth anniversary in March at Skyland Pines with an annual banquet, and we would certainly hope that those of you who are available on March the ninth might come and be a part of that. I will share some brochures so that if you care to, you can pass those along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my man. But, Mr. Peaper, if I may, I know you've heard these things before, but your representation from the historical, they are first class. They had a lot of the events where they're setting up. It's done very professionally and very, we're lucky that people of Plain can come to view some of the historical sites of Plain. The way your organization puts it together is first class, you do an excellent job.
Thank you, thank you. I do converse with other historical societies in Star County, and I can say with complete honesty that some of them do not get nearly the kind of support that we get from you folks, and that's what makes it very, very much appreciative that we have that kind of support.
And can I put this on our website and township newsletter?
Fine, thank you.
Yes, sir. Just give your name and address for the fiscal officer.
Dennis Root, R-O-O-D, thirty forty-one, Thirty Third Street. Just like to know, we're standing on the lighting situation on Andro and Thirty Third. You may have already talked, Akima, a couple minutes late, I don't know if you covered it or not.
We just held, we just held our public hearing and passed a resolution to accept the lighting district.
Okay.
As it was signed, and then we also discussed the vacating of that part of Andro there at the end, and we're going to forward that to the Star County Commissioners with our recommendation.
Okay, now, I know they have a meeting coming up in February where everybody will meet on that issue, but I didn't know about the lighting, and is there a date that we can look forward to this as far as being put in?
Of the lighting district?
Yeah, once the, once the lighting district's passed, we present it to AEB, and AEB will get in touch, and they go out and check the poles, and they'll start, start doing the lights as soon as they can.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of up to them.
Sorry about being late.
Anybody else have anything they wish to speak? Okay, then we'll close public speaks. Concerns of fiscal officer, Flex?
None.
Concerns of the trustees.
I want, I want to steal a little light, I'm right here. I don't know if you just have to wait for it, but, I mean, we need to share, at least get news, though we all have all the granular specifics. Chief works, works hard along with his team to ensure the safety and well-being of our community, and essentially based upon the level of service we provide, how we deliver those services, there's an independent organization that scores how effective we are at doing that. Ultimately, it impacts insurance rates and so forth, but it also provides us with a roadmap ahead for...
Yes, sir. Just give your name and address for the fiscal officer.
Dennis Root, R O O D, 3041, 33rd Street. Just like to know, we're, we're standing on the lighting situation on Enduro and 33rd. You may have already talked, Akima, a couple minutes late. I don't know if you covered it or not.
We just held, we just held our public hearing and passed a resolution to accept the lighting district.
Okay.
As it was signed. And then we also discussed the vacating of that part of Enduro there at the end. And we're going to forward that to the Stark County Commissioners with our recommendation.
Okay, now I know they have a meeting coming up in February where everybody would meet on that issue, but I didn't know about the lighting. And is there a date that we can look forward to this as far as being put in?
Of the lighting district?
Yeah, once the lighting district's passed, we present it to AEB. And AEB will get in touch and they go out and check the poles and they'll start, start doing the lights as soon as they can.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of up to them.
Sorry about being late.
Anybody else have anything they wish to speak?
Okay, then we'll close public speaks. Concerns of fiscal officer, Lex?
None.
Concerns of the trustees. I want, I want to steal a little light, my light here. I don't know if she's intended for us, right? I mean, we need to share at least good news, though we don't have all the granular specifics. Chief works safe, works hard, along with his team, to ensure the safety and wellbeing of our community. And essentially, based upon the level of service we provide, how we deliver those services, there's an independent organization that scores how effective we are at doing that. Ultimately, it impacts insurance rates and so forth, but it also provides us with a roadmap ahead for additional areas of focus to continue to improve upon what we have. We used to be ranked, essentially at five slash.
Five or eight.
Five or eight.
Not how you're rated.
Yeah. And now, because of the improvements between the new centralized fire stations, centralized dispatch, additional manning, some equipment upgrades, that's actually leapfrogged, improved by two full, almost equivalent three grade levels when we look at the percentage scores, but to three and three Y's. So the board's going to be working through chief moving forward on what does that mean to you as homeowners for potential savings and so forth. But then, I mean, we'll be able to talk to future plans as well on what it's going to mean to our operations, whether it's additional bodies, upgrading equipment, stuff, stuff like that, so.
I'll applaud that.
It's a huge.
I want to thank you, I know Chief said we're kind of late to groundwork for this many years ago when we passed the levy back to number five. We're allowing us to relocate a fire station, have the funding for that new station, add additional firefighters, and provide the equipment we're providing them. So he actually laid some groundwork. For the last three or four years, we also put things together to make that happen, so we're real pleased with it. I know at the start was the five that we had or rated at was a high five. And so we're down to the three now, so we had huge savings, hopefully to residents and commercial. And there were insurance ratings in which are paying on premiums, so that actually takes effect first of April, so. So we'll be putting something out in the newsletter coming close to that, so everybody will be aware of that in the township. So, you know, making contact with your insurance companies, because I'm not sure if they'll be contacting you about it, so.
Probably not.
So make sure, you know, we'll put that out, so you're contacting your insurance company to look at that rating and that reclassification. And you should have, you should have a previous savings on your premiums and insurance.
How many have an insurance company that's going to go ahead and voluntarily lower your rates? Not many of us do, so you gotta make sure that you call and contact them.
And you know, even though we have three, I'm going to look at the two. So we're, you know, when you look at across the country, there's a very small percentage of Class 1 departments, Class 2 departments, and Class 3 departments. So we started getting in the 5, 6, 7, 8s where most departments aren't throughout the country, so we're pretty proud.
That's huge. Nice job, Chief. And thank you to the residents for allowing us to pass that levy to some of the changes that we needed to do. A perfect example of those tax dollars being used to actually save the township residents money, so. Okay. I have one announcement that I just found out before the meeting, and I'm going to throw them under the bus.
Oh, I love that.
Yeah, that's good. I'm glad to get that all known. You know, since this is the first of your meeting, Scott's been on the board now five years, one and a sixth. And Scott came in as a semi-young man, single. And Scott Hawes recently just tied the knot, and he has now joined the membership of matrimony. I would like to congratulate him on record, and I hope everybody will do the same. So that said, I'm done.
That's why it was all done. It's a surprise.
A surprise wedding, so.
Well, it's not too often when a seated elected official, he says, I've been out here, has actually gotten married while they were in office. Most of us come in already married. But I want to congratulate you and both your wife and all the happiness.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And does anybody have anything else?
Thank you most. We move on to approval of events for December 23rd, 2014.
Second, yes. Discussion, hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes. We do have a need for an executive session. Be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn to executive session at 7:20, oh, 6:50 PM. 6:55 PM from this regular meeting of January 13th, 2015. As authorized under Ohio revise code 121.22G for the purpose and consideration of, 1) A) Appointment of a public employer official; B) Employment of a public employer official; F) Compensation of a public employer official; and 3) Conference with the law director of broad retained counsel concerning pending or imminent court action.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Leno?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.